As required by the district meetings, I think seventy five, that if it was this meeting was provided on January eleventh, two thousand twenty four by publication of notice, the express kind of New Jersey edition and hundred county Democrat and by person who said no soonness holding in the same date. Mayor Varsany?
Here.
Mr. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Beam?
Here.
Mr. Kenick is excuse. Mrs. McDermott is a little late and we have Mr. Baldwin. In from Mr. Wavery and Mr. Finale.
Here. Please stay after five. The pledge of allegiance.
Is it.
United States of America, into their government for which it stands, for our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We're going to start it on three. Leon's going to be a little late. I'm not thinking to get through some of this. I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes in the special meeting April eleventh and the regular meeting in May sixteenth. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Anybody have any fraction comments, relations? Roll call.
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the June bill list, the interim bill list. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I do my second.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments, they handing pull? Roll call.
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We accept the tax collectors taxes or reports for mayor twenty twenty four. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions on the comments, fractions, roll call.
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Police department report. Anybody have any questions on it? It's only going to be written. Chief's not available tonight.
I'm actually looking. He was suddenly maybe removed. Yeah.
I'm good. You're good. DPW, anybody have any questions on that report? Township clerks report. Lisa, you have anything you wanted to add? It's regular.
I thought I had one thing requesting the approval for the twenty twenty five shredding dates. Tammy was able to secure the two folks that we get every year. Absolute shredding is again by far. The lowest at seven hundred and sixty five dollars per event, so we would like approval. For April twenty sixth and October eleventh of two thousand twenty five. And we only do this in advance so far so that when we include the days to remember in the tax bills that we can have that in there.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions, comments, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Zoning and code enforcement. Paul, you have anything you wanted to say or ask?
Uh, no, everything looked pretty okay here on that report.
Or report and.
And that also looked pretty. Pretty good.
The ACO report. Anybody have any questions on it? I hear it done, I guess.
No, I was, I got a big chuckle out of, she had a ball about a rabbit family and some of these are, no, I didn't see two of them. There's two rabbits.
Two.
Two different families.
Two different families, same kind.
On the same property?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's a scary thing. Oh, yeah. The resident called about the rabbits destroying your landscape.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 it is.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda for the police department, PPW township clerk zoning code enforcement court report and HCL. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Any last minute questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Committee reports. Brian, you have anything?
Yeah, actually I have one. Um, recreation had a meeting yesterday. They are proposing having like a end of the summer bash at the park where there would be bands and they they want to see about. Having maybe beer and wine. What do you agree with what they've proposed? Okay, so it'd be, um, the date that they want to have it would be August seventeenth. And I spoke to Lisa. They had eight o'clock. We're thinking three to seven thirty. I want to, you know, run that by Rich to see if that gives him enough time and if he's okay with it. But right now, I guess. I'm going to make a motion to just. The pavilion's not booked yet, is it Lisa?
We'll have to check on the calendar. You're looking at August seventeenth?
Yeah.
They did confirm.
Yeah.
Do you want to run it and check?
I guess I'll just make a motion to see if.
Tammy's going to check.
Okay.
Too, so.
For August seventeenth, if that's available, but from three to seven thirty. Recreation would have two bands of beer and wine tent. And this this would be a fundraiser and they're thinking, uh, kind of like what Paul's doing in October, like food, maybe. You know, trying to get an ice cream truck or Kona. Which ones?
They Kona.
Okay. I'm making a motion to to set that data aside for the pavilion and I guess, uh, that area, the whole area.
I'll second and wait to see.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Seventeen? Yeah.
Roll call.
There is, there is something currently booked. From three to eight.
Yeah.
There's something already booked on.
Okay.
Seven to three to eight. And the tent is open. Uh, the twenty. Unless they move to a Sunday.
Why don't we?
Want to improve it.
About the twenty fourth.
August. Let's take it to. Three to eight.
Okay, the tenth?
The thirty first is intended to open too.
Why don't we just the tenth and the thirty first and then I'll go back?
Okay, so we're letting the. Remake the motion if.
Yeah. I made that motion that, uh, we, uh, set aside the tenth and the thirty first for recreation to have a, uh, end of the summer. Bash where it's a fundraiser.
And I'll second it again with the provision of number fees. Anybody have questions, comments?
No.
Roll call this.
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
And it?
Thank you.
Hey, is there, I'm getting questions from people and from the school, I'm in contact with them. Is there any issue between rec and the schools using their facilities and stuff?
No, actually.
Where you guys wanted to. Uh, negotiate each guy with them or something like.
Actually.
Yeah, I don't know what. For the use of the gyms and stuff.
No, so actually I talked to, uh, Beth and I'm hoping that open space we can look at it goes good with it. We're trying to lease out the middle school. Maybe that could then.
For basketball, something or?
Well, no, just lease out the field.
Oh.
Um, basketball. Think you're still good.
Yes.
Something changes.
No, no, I mean, I think they're just getting confused because there's a lot of mixed.
No, so but, yeah, the only thing that we have problems with last year is they only have one custodian. So hopefully. With whatever they're doing, maybe they'll be able to hire.
Okay.
Um, no, that was my concern too.
When they need like two custodians to have the.
And so they have like one, one custodian that really does it over the weekends.
Oh, oh, okay. And that's when you're using it over the weekend.
And they, they had a couple of issues where it was supposed to snow and it didn't snow like nice early, but it's going to happen if you may have a couple of people.
Sure.
So.
We're big exactly.
Yeah.
Paul, you have any?
No, and I, uh, actually I wanted just to, I like the idea about leasing the fields again.
Yeah.
So that we could, uh, uh, make improvements on.
So, yeah, so Beth, um, I guess we have to spring it up to.
Yes, okay. No, but I think that's a really good idea.
It's, uh, defenses are.
Sure.
Crossed it.
No, I, no, I think that that's a good idea. Uh, and yeah, I have no, uh. No committee report for me and anything that's just not.
Leon?
No.
Summer must be here. No one's. Bill's not here, but I do want to bring up Florida vet a little bit. Um, I'm getting calls from. From then, there's, I think there's a lot of misunderstandings going back and forth. As, as we know, I believe Bill will not be saying that. I mean, he obviously is questioning their budget as an individual and as a taxpayer. But sometimes the questions, I actually caught a call from one or two residents saying that, is he there on your, our behalf or is he there for himself? I called other people and they said, sometimes he makes it pretty clear if he's speaking for himself. Other times he makes it clear that he's speaking for the township, but. I, uh, I just think we have to be very cognizant of, I mean, the whole purpose and layers on is bringing information back and forth, not to oppose budgets and things like that. That's my opinion. But, and he's not here to, to, uh, to explain things, but. At the last meeting, they came away with the understanding that we were still talking about ending our shared service with them. Now, last week I thought we were pretty clear that.
Yeah, I got the same call.
That we, we are not discussing it. We discussed it last week. We decided it's beneficial for both sides and we're going to continue with it. And they said that they, the way they understood it was that, oh, we're going to get back to you. They also were told about. Our budget was going to be seven point five percent and that still didn't include, and I'm not saying Bill said this was their understanding, that that didn't include our increase. Oh, for raises for employees and, uh, something else. But there's a lot of misinformation going back and forth. And I think we have to be very clear that I don't think it's open for discussion. Does anybody here questioning their budget, how they're spending things? I mean, as, as a group, I mean, as an individual, obviously we can, but we've never discussed these things, but it's, they're starting to feel as if. The township committee is putting pressure upon them over a lot of their issues and it's really hurting our relationship.
And I told you that one specific teacher said that to me and I need to clear that her. That he is speaking on the behalf of himself. She.
And I don't want to get into much. She's not here. It's not fair to talk, but I, I just wanted to get it out there for the school's sake and they don't have a meeting in July, so we do have next month to discuss this and stuff, but. It, it's really getting like bad with me getting phone calls. You're getting them too?
Yeah, I've talked to Beth a couple.
Yeah, I mean, and.
And the same thing, I actually I brought up, uh, getting a lease. I'm like, no, you know, I don't want to lose me either. Obviously, if we lost anything with rec. We, it would be a couple of phone calls.
Exactly.
A thousand.
And, and she, she had said that when I spoke to you, she, I think I have a pretty relation with rec, uh, with, uh, rec. She said, I speak to them and she goes, I, you know, and stuff, so. But I, I just think maybe next month when Bill's, we got to discuss it, but I just wanted to get it out there so it doesn't fester for another month with the school board that we're not attacking them. We're not, you know, Bill certainly has the perfect right as the taxpayer, the resident to go question whatever he wants, but it's not coming from us. And I think they're getting confused on what, what, what it is, but, um, I mean, I said to them, we made it very clear. We're keeping the shared service agreement. You know, I don't know why anyone would have said that to you. So I, I, well, like I said, he's not here to explain. Maybe he's got an answer to that, but I just think we have to be clear about it. And I think next month we might have to have a discussion on it, so.
Right. And, and then just from my point of view, I, I do my best to avoid discussions on their budget because they, number one, I don't attend their meetings on a regular basis.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that group selected, they have their own people involved. Um, not my business. As a taxpayer, I'm certainly concerned, uh, but I would never do anything to. Use my position here to try to influence, uh, some type of a decision at the school.
I mean, the only thing I would, I would suggest that if we can look at would be, um, the resource officer and they can, I know we have to fund some of it. I think that's how, but if.
Yeah, you were here last week when we talked about.
No, I wasn't.
And that's the other thing. I just.
Oh, yeah, I missed them. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. One of the issues was, that was brought up. If you remember when we were talking about. They were going to pick up for the SRL. And then I said, with the money we're saving, maybe we're going to look into, I suggested.
Yeah.
Hiring a second one. So we have one at both schools. They claim that their understanding was. We were directing them to budget money for a second SRL. And that's not even close to what I discussed. I only made a suggestion. I didn't even go that far. I don't think we just said, we don't even have to talk about it tonight. We've got two months to make that decision. But that's the misinformation that's going back and forth and it's starting to cause hard feelings, uh, between the two organizations and I, it's not a good thing. We should be working together, trying to come up with answers, uh. For, uh, for the, you know, save the taxpayers' money and get better services for them. That's all. Um, that's it for me. Anybody else have anything else? Professional reports, right?
Well, actually before we get into professional reports, since Joe walked in, Joe, is there anything you wanted to discuss with your report?
No.
Oh, okay. I mean, we glanced through it, but okay.
Actually, Joe, sorry. Uh. Babies Field for that baseball clinic.
What's happening?
Babies Field, you know how we're having that baseball clinic in July?
Babies or Stecker? Eric Holmes?
Yeah. Okay, good. You got to and said Stecker. Okay, you're ahead of me.
Okay. I was looking at removing some of the horrible toilets. So we're not.
Okay, so you got all of them.
You want to ask them too about the, the fields behind the middle school?
Oh, yeah, Joe, um, I was talking to Beth Rooney. You know, we, we've discussed before with the, you know, the backstop, the fencing at the middle school. Do you think you'd be able to take on if we, we sign a lease, a five-year lease with them, um, taking the, the top fields? And, uh.
We're already doing it now.
Okay.
We've set them up. We mow.
But we can't bring any dirt and we can't work on them. Yeah, so.
Pick, we fix the backstop. So we don't do the same thing as we did the other one. Because they're actually, the backstop is actually recreations. We took that from one other, the little fields out here and put it there. So that's actually.
So then we can start working on a grant. Uh, the same grant we just received. Maybe they can get the grant. Both of us can next year.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Well, we got.
Yep, yep, yep.
Mike?
Good evening. Just a couple of things. Um. That, uh, I'll just mention this as I do every month. You got the twenty twenty four DOT grant, which we're not using this year, but again, come next year, it's gonna, we're gonna need to move forward with it. Okay. Uh, twenty twenty five DOT grants. Those are for next year's applications, which are, uh, which Donna Becker is just wrapping up right now. She's been in touch with Joe. Um, and we're, we're submitting for Lowe's Hollow Road and Palmer Street. Those were agreed upon between Donna, myself and Joe, who's the best candidate. So those will go in and, you know, we've had a nice little run here of getting these grants every year. So let's see what happens this year. Um. Comcast. Comcast, uh.
Subject.
Yeah. You know, um. They've been around working for months as we know. All of a sudden they kind of disappeared. And Pat, the tutor from our office or inspector, saying, have you heard anything about, why aren't they finishing up? Because they are very close. He said, I haven't heard any. We ended up and Lisa's been very involved with, uh, the communication with Leon, who is a contractor for Comcast. He's not a Comcast person.
We have yet to see a Comcast.
No, he, Al, Al Beckett, you remember Al Beckett?
One meeting.
Paul, Paul, okay.
He's got a solution or something. I'm sort of wondering if it's really a Comcast.
Well, when they send you the flyer about hooking up, mate, whenever.
I hope their service.
What?
Better than the work they did putting it in.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Okay, to, to the point. So we, we finally touched base with them and said, guys. You know, you, you get, you get to like eighty-five percent done and then you're, you're gone. And we hear that they're working in Edison, that that's their next project, their area. We're like, wait a second, you can't just leave. There's people with cables coming out of the ground. There's a restoration that hasn't been done. Uh, there's areas that haven't been served. So Pat and Leon took a drive today around town and came up and went up, Pat, did you talk to you, Joe, right? Yeah, Joe gave Pat a few trouble spots and needed work and so forth. So. Uh, that seems to have kind of taken a turn for the, in the right direction. So we can get that done and let, you know, let's get the job done and then they can go. Uh, there's one air, the biggest area left that hasn't been served is the River, the River Road down, you know, the affordable units in Greenwich Chase. Uh, they're, they're. Having trouble trying to find and determine a good way to put the line in because there's a lot of underground utilities in a small area. You've got all those driveway openings and so, so forth. So there, there were ways to get a proposal from them to how they're going to handle that area. But that's probably the biggest single area that hasn't, that nothing's in the ground yet. So. Will be the last time we hear about Comcast.
Well. I'm about ready. Put a stop work order on until they can come in and give us a plan. That's where I'm at. I've had it.
Well, when you say a plan, as far as you mean.
The finish.
The Revere Road. Okay, okay.
I mean, because I, I just think next month you're going to say, oh, I talked to them again. I, I'm tired of it. Like if they don't have it resolved by next month, I, I'm prepared to make a motion to do a stop work.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well.
For the past.
Let's put it this way.
And I'll. And we got, I got, I'll make the motion. We got a second.
Right.
Okay, because I was going to say I'll go on the record right now. That, that, they might not be done, 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 but they're, they should be able to get a lot of work on.
Explain it a lot.
Between tonight and next month's meeting.
And I said the last month, their communication is horrible for a communication company. That's the irony of it. Communication company.
Yeah.
And their communication is absolutely horrible.
Like there, I, I still go on LoPat and they left LoPat and there's wires everywhere. So they, they, they're not, they're not coming back.
Yeah.
Why don't?
Well, that is unacceptable. Obviously, so.
Bob, one thing I wanted to mention too is one of the promises that they made was that spreadsheet that Leon and I were going to work on together and get updates back and forth and they would turn green when somebody was satisfied and I still have never seen it.
The reason I don't want to do it now is because the excuses are given, give them a month excuses. So I'd rather give them the month notice.
Right.
And tell them they better be in, you better be reporting next month, something definitive or like, so I'll make the motion to do a stop work.
All right. I'll, I will relay that, 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 the governing body. Is, is frustrated and disappointed with your, uh, progress. And if the next, if the July. Committee meeting comes around and I give my report like I do every month and you guys haven't made like significant progress towards being done in Greenwich Township. They're not going to be happy. Let's just leave it at that. It won't threaten, so to speak, but.
Hire one of the contractors to go rip out all this stuff.
Okay. Uh, all right. Oh, were, were we done?
No.
No, no, you're done. Are you done?
No, I'm not done.
Done with that topic.
Um. We had a meeting here last week, um, with the DP regarding floodplain administration and so forth. It was, and it was with me basically as the floodplain administrator. One of my many glorious titles. Uh. And meeting went well, it was fine. We have, Lisa, there's a map here that they, it's actually, it's a really nice color map of the town. Shows, uh, all floodways and whatnot. So I'm going to give it to you. To, to put it up would be the worst thing in the world. It's a nice map. Uh. So we're going to get a, we're going to get a report from the meeting and all the questions were asked and where we are, this, that and the other thing. And the, the purpose of the meeting is so to show that Greenwich is in compliance. With the requirements that the state has established so that we are eligible for flood insurance if we need it, for people that need it. The NFBI, the NFIP, National Flood Insurance Program, uh, is requires this of the state, you know, that's a federal entity, requires this in New Jersey. That's why this is happening. So just, uh, but everything's fine. We'll, we'll get some comments, no doubt. We'll, we'll address them and we'll be good. So, and that would be all I have for this week.
Okay, thanks.
Mike, can I get a copy of that for office emergency management? I should have some, I should have everything on footprints.
Of the shore. But I don't have, how about this then? I'm going to take this back with me to make another copy. So I can give a copy to Joe and then I'll, right, because you're not dying for this, right? Okay.
Mostly not.
Okay, fine.
Question, um, I don't, do we want to talk about the. During your report here, the failure of the pump? Oh. And all that good kind of stuff right now?
Well, I do have an idea for executive.
That, that we're going to talk about.
Now, now, I don't think that qualifies as that. I, well, the ladies, what, do you want me to?
Yeah, sure, because I, I don't know. Did you get copied from Dan Madden today?
Yes.
That the Paseo or Paramus co-op or whatever?
Oh.
That, that a lot, those pumps and things that we need are available through their co-op.
Oh, okay.
To.
I did, okay. Maybe I didn't finish reading it.
Maybe it's possible. Right, Lisa, did you see that one from Dan Madden?
Yeah, so that's actually in your packets.
Okay.
I believe I copied that whole thing for you guys. Like, you want to look at this?
So.
Take my copy?
Well, well, Lisa's bringing that over to Mike.
I was going to say.
We had a, uh.
Sort of damn man.
A pump completely fail over there. Um, it's twenty five years old. Um, the folks that take care of, uh. Who's the company that?
That.
Cat, uh, has brought a temporary pump over there in case the other one fails, uh, which we are paying for. And the, the conversation went to both pumps are twenty five years old. They, they, they switch them off so that one's not more heavily hour than the other. But their recommendation is that both of them be removed. Um, and they were coordinating, trying to match up something, which today I believe Dan found. Pumps that were specked out to do that and all that kind of things. Um, and, and it's not something that can really be dilly-dally for too, too long. Um, but the, he was supposed to get his prices, but.
Yeah.
At the time. There was a pretty solid number at around ninety thousand dollars a piece, you know, to do them. And we were, but our conversation was the, the sewer fund, which is exactly what that's for. You know, has money in there to pay for it.
Was it ninety thousand in late?
It's legal installation.
That's a, that's a tremendous price.
Right, right. So, but again, I mean, Dan's going to have to, those numbers are going to be, have to be shorted, but I don't want any surprises with, at this stage of the game, the general. Direction that Dan was taking was that we were going to replace both of them and at somewhere in around a hundred and eighty to maybe two hundred thousand dollars. And, and. And I don't believe it's an option.
No.
You know, and that's why the, there's a sewer fund for that, just for that same purpose. So it's not costing the taxpayers any increases or anything like that. The money's already there for those that use it. Um, but we need to.
The people who use it want it working.
Absolutely. They want those pumps to fire up. You know, so that is something that. I don't know if we want a motion after we get. To create, to have a motion to have that work done once we get the pricing.
So.
Uh, yeah, I did see that come in there late, right?
This is the, uh, the opportunity for the co-op. I had emailed them to get permission to get an application, but we could probably do a resolution number to authorize. We could do something to authorize that we enter. It's a free co-op.
Right.
But if we don't want to delay it a month to be able to sign up with them.
Well, why wouldn't you do, what's wrong with doing it tonight?
That's what I'm saying. We, it's a.
Because, I mean, a month, you know, the other one happens and now you're strictly on the emergency one that's out there.
And then the other, the other item that he sent over because he thinks it could take a month or more to get those pumps, he's suggesting that we not risk this because they'll likely go down on Fourth of July when you don't want them to. Um, that's what the estimate is that's in front of everybody. The, the one that's, that's written to Chapman and that is to rent, I guess, and.
Oh, so the emergency one's not over there yet?
This is an emergency exterior for forty seven, eighty nine and sixty cents. But yeah, I think if we could do a motion to authorize that we.
Resolution to enter into an agreement for a cooperative subject to attorney review.
That'd be great. And that is the saying. Keep moving it. The Saic Valley Sewerage Commission co-op.
All right, so we'll make a, a, a motion on that, right?
That sixty-two, twenty-four?
I think it'll be sixty-one. Yeah, sixty-one, I think.
Sixty-one is hundred and counting.
You're right, sixty-two.
Should we just do that one now out of the mirror so that we can. Lisa?
Sure, yeah.
Sixty-two, let's say I'll make a motion. We adopt resolution sixty-two, twenty-four, which is what?
Uh, during the Paseo. Authorize township to enter into a cooperative, uh, agreement with the Saic Valley Sewerage, Sewerage Commission, um, subject to attorney review.
I've got one second.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
And Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
And then Bob, I don't know if you want to handle this at the same time.
Yeah, I would think we would want to handle this at the same time. So I'll make a motion to put a, a emergency pump. Out at the pump station in case our one and only pump fails. I'll second it.
Any further questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Varsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
And Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Very good. Very good.
Well, I yeah, I didn't wanna miss.
Yeah, I I think it would've came up in.
I benefit none of them. I'm not a.
You literally don't wanna be out there with a shovel. Old business municipal complex. We did awards on the bids last week. Uh we got a five million dollar grant uh to help build the complex. And I think we're waiting on a meeting with the the architect to start planning some dates, correct? Okay, anybody else have anything on the municipal complex? Truck traffic. Were you gonna follow up with the county to ask for the uh counter?
Well, I understand that you guys talked about this last month, but we weren't here.
Oh, you weren't here, okay.
But but Lisa did bring it up to me uh the other day and kind of pulled me a little bit from left field, but that's okay. I did put a call in yesterday to the to the county engineering department to find out. Okay, how that how available are they? Because we've we've rented them in the past. So it's not a it's not a a complex piece of equipment. But it's gotta be.
They they should still have.
Everybody's having the same problems. I wanted to get a lot of questions.
Oh, well, maybe so, but um I left a message with um with. Uh Sam, the the gallon answers the phone. And I said, could somebody please get back to me on behalf of Greenwood? Like to rent some uh reuse some of your your uh traffic counters. And again, this was just yesterday, so I did not hear. So I'll follow up again.
Hey, we also have any old business?
Wait, and and what just while we're talking trucks, I know we all kind of familiar. I don't know that we're all familiar with. That how the county made it thirteen thousand G V W from Route eighty to up here to uh. If not all five nineteen. Yeah, no, well, I and thirteen thousand G V W is love. That should virtually eliminate all truck traffic on five nineteen. Other than local delivery. I mean thirteen thousand G V W. I I give the box truck is gonna be over that, right? You know, so but uh I I know that there was some conversations that I've had with. Not Greenwood Township residents because I go into harmony with emergency services. There's been a lot of chatter about it. And I'm like, I I I don't know how that's gonna be enforceable with the state police being, you know, so uh uh minimal. In between there and there, but. What a win that would be if you were to eliminate that kinda traffic. Because that they're coming up five nineteen up Liberty Road and straight down seventy eight by way of us. You know, if they can eliminate a ton of that, that'd be a great move, but there's signs uh when you go through.
Yeah, ironic signs right now stating that.
Bob, aren't they coming on five nineteen when they come down Warren plant six thirty nine?
Sometimes, yeah. And I'm not quite sure if that thirteen thousand G V W went all the way down that far or not.
Well, I hope it did.
So hopefully we'll see a little bit something on north. And set well, actually not south main street, but north main street, maybe traffic head to seventy eight will diminish a bunch.
Okay, anybody else have any old business? New business, anybody have any new business they wanna bring up? Okay, looking for a motion to adopt resolution fifty two twenty four, which is the assertion of the claim communities grant. Into the budget, resolution fifty three twenty four, which is authorizing waived interest charges. Is everybody aware of this? The problem we've had in the tax office?
Oh, yeah.
The post office lost or held up or however you wanna call it. Quite a few tax payments. And we've been trying to address it with the post office and the post mistress over here basically said, there's nothing you can do. Nothing you can do about it. I don't think that's an acceptable answer. So we're waiting to try to get hold of the. And and she was very reluctant to give us anybody else to call, like, you know, so. Uh I don't know who she is, but if she represents the post office, she may be a peg below Comcast right now. But uh i- if we don't have anything by next month, I think we're gonna have to draft a letter to uh. Congressman or something and lots of complaint about because she's she said just get used to it because it's gonna happen the next time too.
The primary uh the primary ballots, people didn't get them by me and I called the post. I was calling everybody and they told me. They were delivered. I'm like, they weren't delivered.
Took Lisa two or three phone calls before the woman she was spoke speaking to finally admitted I am the postmaster. First she acted like she was a third person, like, what do you need to speak to the post mistress for? Well, she doesn't accept the she doesn't accept the uh meetings with people. She doesn't meet with people and stuff. Then finally the third phone call, she said, I am the postmistress.
Well, they're they're recent uh uh. Everybody calls us now mail now for a reason, you know, and they are certainly living up to their expectations.
Yeah, thank you. At least try to smooth it over when somebody called that. I I don't get it, but if we don't have results by next month, actually. I when Lisa was talking, I said I would have the chief make a referral to the law to the law enforcement division cuz that sounds funny. Well, we ended up with two cases now of where they're uh. Check wash.
Check washing.
Check washing checks. So I thought there was something strange. Now, I'm not saying this office is involved in it, but like. I can't believe their lack of interest to looking into it cuz that would seem strange to me that something that you know has checks in it cuz it's going to the tax collector. Would go missing for thirty days. Or longer. Then all of a sudden show up for delivery. So we made the referral and we ended up finding out there was at least two check washing cases or. Anyway, but uh anyway, so resolution authorized and waiting interest charges on the people whose mail got stuck for the month or longer. Resolution fifty four twenty four is liquor license renewal. Who's that for?
It's for everybody.
Everybody, okay. I thought we just did one two months ago, but uh fifty five twenty four is appointment of also L A as a skilled labor and D P W. And that's it at this time. So looking for a motion for new resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Anybody have any questions or comments on any of the four? Looking for a motion to introduce source number one oh six twenty twenty four, an ordinance vacating open uh noble space that has been on township parcel block twenty three point three lot. One point one zero one. Paul and I were talking about this before the meeting. What what is that all about?
You know the piece on Valerie and Greenwood Street? Where we traded. Something for. I I'm not, I didn't know that this had come to resolution. I'm not even sure who who wrote this up. Lisa, where did this even come from?
So it came from Mike Labor. This has come up a few times the last couple of years.
Years, no, I know. And that's why I was a little surprised to see.
So Mike had extensive conversations with them and it turns out that there is, you know, there's this easement that was never vacated by the township. And now that they wanna sell, they can't sell because of that.
Oh, the piece that's that's preventing a lot of people. There's a building lot there.
So I'll make the motion.
Yeah, this is three pages of a lot of.
Was there? I'm sorry, was there a second? Oh, Brian, sorry. Uh Mayor Varsting?
Okay, looking for a motion to open public hearing of ordinance number one oh four twenty twenty four, normal submitting tactic sixteen zoning section. Thirteen point two B one that had micro breweries is permitted to. Anything will make the motion?
Make the motion.
Anyone want a second?
A second.
Anyone wishing to come up and make any comments about this uh. Change in zoning laws, welcome to come up and make a public comment. Saying not to make a motion and close public hearing on it.
Mr. Baylor.
Looking for a motion to adopt warrants number one oh four twenty twenty four for the micro brewery terminal. Do you say anyone make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Any further questions, comments, discussion?
Mayor Varsting?
Okay, twenty twenty four budget, second reading, uh looking for a motion to uh. Open the pub. Well, should we go to you first or open it up first?
I can go first.
Yeah, if I can go first, explain it also, then maybe when they open public hearing, people have a question based on the bad news you've run.
Um okay, so I'm I'm gonna be pretty brief about this. I know we've done a lot of this throughout the public meetings over the last few months. Um so we are in compliance with both the appropriation cap underneath that by about eighty four hundred dollars. And we're below the tax levy cap by twenty two cents. If you recall from our last meeting, we fought and struggled, but we got there. Um what does that equate to for uh the taxpayers in the town? It's a five point three cent for one hundred dollars of assessed valuation increase or about seven point four one percent. Uh which makes that a hundred and forty four dollars annually to the average home assessed at two hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. Or twelve dollars a month. Um I know that we like to have the breakdown per hundred thousand, so per hundred thousand, it's fifty three dollars. So for a house assessed at one hundred thousand dollars, it would be fifty three dollars. For a house assessed at two hundred thousand, it would be a hundred and six, three hundred thousand, one hundred fifty nine, four hundred thousand, two hundred and twelve.
Anybody have any questions on? Okay, I'll make a motion. We open a public hearing on the uh budget.
All seconds.
All favor? Anybody wishing to come up, make any comments? Yell at us, question us on the budget. I'll make a motion to close public hearing on it. All favor? I uh only I wanted to say on it was. I keep saying it every year. I've been saying it for years and this year it's really coming to a head between the school and us cuz it's big. This is a for us, it's an extension. It's the biggest one I've ever been on, but I I pulled. And township has two thousand seventeen parcels of land. Seventeen hundred and fifty three are houses. So that that's why it goes up so much cuz we. Another a hundred and four are foreign. What comes down to for we have fifty five commercial properties at three industrial. That that's why it goes up so much for a house. We don't have a tax base cuz we've. We've opened space, farmland preserved, us into this type of predicament. Because obviously you get no taxes on those two and. I don't I don't. Well, there are several answers. I don't know what people want per se, if they wanna. Try to get some uh ratables in, what they would be acceptable ratables. But I mean, I I always said we're we have a revenue problem, but when I pulled this out and looked at it, I was like, that's unbelievable. I got a two thousand properties, fifty eight are basically businesses. I it can't, I'm not a finance guy, but I I don't think the township. It's gonna need a crossroads sooner or later where people have to make a decision on just willing to pay more taxes and keep everything out. But find out what you're gonna accept to change the ratings. But I did say that several years ago when we were all, everyone is against warehousing and I said warehousing won't come here. It's all necessitated by taxes and I I think not in the next year or two. I probably won't be here anymore for it, but I think in six to ten years, gotta be a big decision made on which pathway the township wants to go. You know, people are okay going up a hundred, a hundred fifty or two hundred dollars a year in taxes, I guess. It's okay, I but sooner or later, it's gotta start breaking the bank. Uh Paul and I've been trying to with that area redevelopment, we're trying to work out there, which. I never seen so much red tape. To try to do anything to. We thought it would be easy, like we we need sewer out there. In order to get to sewer, we gotta go across uh open space or green acres.
No, uh no, um uh. Farmland preserved. Can't do it. And two years and a hundred thousand plus dollars just to get permission.
I mean, we wanna run sewer to the municipal complex, the municipal complex. We can't run it across green acres. That's green acres, right? Green acres property. Or you can, but it'll take two years.
Couple hundred thousand.
And we're a municipality. It it's no wonder. Private sector companies say this is hard state to do business. I mean, it's it's like a stock on everything, but. That's enough to be rambling. Okay, looking for a motion to uh. Uh make looking for a motion, resolution fifty six twenty four, the adopted twenty twenty four budget. Anybody wanna make that?
Make the motion.
I'll second. Any other further questions, comments, roll call? I'll make a motion. We open public uh hearing on the order number one oh five twenty twenty three. It's a coal awareness. It's orange. We have to do in order to feel it could. Keep the coal, the cost of living in next year's budget. So anybody wanna second that?
I'll second.
All favor? Aye. Anyone wishing to come up, make any comments over this ordinance is welcome to come up. Saying none, I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing on the one oh five twenty twenty three. Anybody want a second? All favor? I'll make a motion. We adopt warrants number one oh five twenty twenty three. Anybody wanna make a second? Any last minute questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Varsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor? Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, do we do everything we need for the budget? Audit twenty twenty three. What do you wanna talk about?
Yeah, so I had handed out to all of you prior to the meeting a little three page packet. Um so basically that three page packet takes this big book and consolidates it into. Uh really the highlights of of the most important things that you all need to know for the year. Um so I'm gonna start out by going through the current fund. Uh in the current fund, we had twenty five point four million dollars of revenues this year. And twenty five million dollars of expenditures. In that twenty five point four million dollars of revenues, we used six hundred and twenty thousand dollars of fund balance. Uh so overall, from two thousand twenty two to two thousand and twenty three. We had seven hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars of starting fund balance at the end of two thousand twenty two. And it decreased by two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars to five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars as of the end of two thousand and twenty three. Uh for two thousand twenty three, our tax collection rate remained strong, ninety eight point four one percent, which is about where it's been for the last several years. So uh no, no real deviations there and that's a good tax collection collection number. Just there's a little bit of highlights there on your debt information. Uh we paid down one point two, almost one point three, actually. A million dollars in bond anticipation notes. If you remember from last year, a very large portion of that was we had money. Uh about one point two million dollars that we put into reserve to pay debt service. So we utilized that in two thousand twenty three. To pay down a lot of our bond anticipation notes. Uh and we also paid down two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in serial bonds. There are three serial bonds that are outstanding right now. One of them will mature in two thousand and twenty six. The second one matures in two thousand twenty nine and the last one is way, way, way out that none of us will probably see in two thousand and forty nine. The sewer utility fund for the year uh operate was was operating strong again. Uh we had one point three million dollars of revenues. We had eight hundred and seventy one thousand dollars in expenditures. Uh in that one point three million dollars of revenues, we used about three hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. Uh so overall, the balance, the fund balance in the sewer operating fund increased from one point two million dollars at the beginning of two thousand twenty three. To about one point one, one million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars at the end of two thousand twenty three. Uh but if you flip to the second page of the handout, uh there you're gonna see um the management suggestions. So these are just things that we like to give highlights for, uh things that we find that we necessarily don't think. Rise to the level of having to have a recommendation for them. Um so we just, I think that this has been in here for a little bit. Uh the first one at the top of the page about the federal and state grant funds. Um it's just that there's older appropriated grant fund amounts and receivables. We've talked to Shannon about this. We have to review them. Basically, if they're no longer valid, if they're no longer spendable funds or receivable funds to us. We just have to cancel them all. Uh it's we're we're carrying the balances, but they're not necessarily valid if the grant period has expired. So that's something that we uh are working on and that Shannon I know is working on cleaning up. Um the next one is there's a new gasp that's coming out related to compensated absences. Um basically, we're just detailing that. Everything, everything that. Um, basically, we're just detailing that everything, everything that's within the Gatsby. Um, you guys are all in compliance with everything, so there's really nothing to worry about here. It's just on the accounting side of things, it's gonna change a little bit. So it's just advising us to that change. Um, the third one down there, you see COVID nineteen federal funding. This has been in there for a few years now, the first two paragraphs. The third paragraph that we now added is just basically saying, make sure that we spend all of the money. Uh, it has to be spent by the end of two thousand twenty six, and it has to be encumbered by the end of two thousand twenty four, so, this fiscal year, uh, what, six and a half months away about now, so, um, just advising on that. Uh, if you flip to the last page, uh, you'll see that we actually had seven recommendations from this year's audit. Um, some of these are, 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 well, the first one's definitely familiar, segregation of duties. I know we've had this conversation. Uh, as, as you've all been up there for a couple of years now, we've had this conversation a couple of times. Um, it's just, if you have a smaller office with less individuals, it's very hard to segregate all the different, you know, reporting, recording and, and authorization functions. Um, so that one's just there. Uh, there's really not much that we can do to remove that one. Um, but it's not, it's not a, uh, it's not a big issue per se. We see it in about ninety nine percent of all of our clients. Um, the second one, per sort of being prepared and approved prior to the purchase of goods and services. Uh, we had quite a few of these this year. Um, so we thought that it rose to the level of a recommendation. We discussed it with Shannon, um, Lisa too a little bit, that we're gonna kind of work on this and try to be better. Um, of course, there's always circumstances that come up where there's emergencies or extenuating circumstances. When we put this in as a recommendation, it's because it's not an exception, it's kind of repetitive throughout our testing. So that's the reason that that's in there. Um, the third recommendation is uh, to limit the amount of inter-fund balances. Basically, there were a lot of transactions that had occurred where, uh, one fund owed another fund money, whether it be because, uh, for example, current fund receiving money on behalf of another fund, that was never turned over prior to the end of the year, or current fund spending money on behalf of another fund, and that fund not reimbursing the current fund before the end of the year. Um, left significant balances, which impacts actually your fund balance in the end. Uh, for the end of the year, when they get returned in the following year theoretically, that'll clear itself up. Your fund balance will rise from that. Um, but, it was just that there was, there was quite a number of them, so we thought that it was, it was valid to put it in there, and it did have an effect on your fund balance this year. It is part of the reason for the decrease, because those fund, those inter-funds not being returned prior to the end of the year, as I said, bring that number down. Um, which has an impact. Uh, it, it restricts the amount that we can put into the budget, you know, as well as just the general obvious one of making your fund balance look lower. Um, the fourth recommendation we had was that all bank accounts be reconciled on a monthly basis in a timely manner. Um, they were eventually all reconciled, um, but it did take a little bit of time, um, and it kind of delayed us a little bit. So that was the reason that we, we included that. Um, the fifth one, transactions being uh, posted appropriately and accurately in the general capital fund. Um, there were just a number of transactions that occurred within the general capital, that weren't quite hitting the right lines, uh, regarding improvement authorizations and, and other items that we had to, reallocate as we went through our process. Um, obviously, the reason that that gets included as a recommendation is when you have these improvement authorizations going on, you pass an order specifying the exact amount that can be spent. If it's not being tracked properly, you run into the situation where you could be over expending one of those improvement authorizations, which would mean that you would have to raise it in a budget of a succeeding year if you were to do that. Um, so again, that's why that one is in there. Um, collections with the outside offices. The uh, monthly cash books are reconciled with the finance office records on a monthly basis. Um, that's our sixth recommendation. Um, we found that the money that was being turned over, on the outside office books wasn't in agreement with the amounts that were in the CFO's records. Um, so we had to kind of analyze that, Shannon helped us go through all of that, and kind of sort through it at the end of the year. Um, but realistically, it should be done on at least a monthly basis throughout the year. This way you know what's actually coming in from those sources. And the final one is that grant expenditure, the charge to the appropriate grant balances when the respective appropriate grants have been designated as funding sources for such expenditures. So this one's a little bit more, complicated, so stop me if you're not following. So when, when we had certain grants that were supposed to be used for particular purposes, that was supposed to be charged. Um, sometimes what was happening is that they were getting charged the actual budget. Okay, so in other words, we were using tax dollars instead of grant money to pay for those things. Okay, so, any of those amounts, we, we, some of it, we wound up reallocating at the end, and charging them appropriately through the right grants, some of them we couldn't. Um, so it's, it's just imperative that, you know, when we put the budget together and we put out the, amounts that are gonna be used for grants, that we're actually using that, you know, for example, like we have um, the, the, the policing grant that the chief is going to charge harsh, part of a salary to. Well, we wound up, that's one of the things that we wound up moving this year is because we found that it was all charged just to your operating budget, not to the grant. So we went back and we changed it, refunded the budget, and put it against the grant for the expenditures, which we were allowed to do, that's just where it should have been charged in the first place, it's just not how it was reported, so. Um, again, that, it, it kind of, that will have an impact on, on the budget process, which is a big reason that that gets also included as, as a recommendation here. Um, that being said, I know we've gone through a lot of this already with, with Shannon, we've talked to Lisa about it as well. Um, and they're all things that they're aware of, that they're, they're working at, so the hope is that, um, everything but segregation duties is gone by next year. Um, it's, it, that's, it's, it's a big leap to take, but hopefully, a lot of it does go away.
Okay.
Does anyone have any specific questions for me?
Well, I don't have anything to do, anything else. How about, track if we're doing this, Lisa?
Um, monthly meeting.
Yeah, well, let's try to make sure we're on this, so every month we can answer six out of seven.
Yep.
Cause we're not hiring any other people to segregate the buildings.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution fifty seven twenty four, approving the corrective action plan we just discussed. Anybody wanna make that motion?
Right.
Anybody want a second?
Sergeant.
Any questions, comments? Other than, we wanna be told every month that we're in compliance. Roll call.
Mayor Versini?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
And Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We adopt resolution fifty eight twenty four, certification of the audit from two thousand twenty three. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, Lisa.
Mayor Versini?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Group, group affidavit, we do afterwards, or sign?
So I'll craft that and put it in a mailbox if somebody can sign it and pass it on.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for, I don't play that order now, fifty nine, resolution fifty nine twenty four, option of that, and sixty twenty four. Fifty nine is uh, approval, submit a green application, uh, with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for Lewis Hollow Road Resurfacing Project. Sixty is uh, for DOT, for Palmer Street Resurfacing, there might just talk about. Uh, anyone wanna make that motion? For those two resolutions, or did I make a resolution way over?
For the motion.
We got, no one here mentioned, I'll, I'll second. Roll call.
Mayor Versini?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
And Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolution sixty one twenty four, authorizing the clerk to enroll us in the Hunter County Educational Services, Cooperative Pricing System, which has no feat to it. I'll make that motion. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Versini?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Brian or Paul, you wanna hand over the next one? Resolution, or Amy, or you guys are on the address? You want?
Nah, you can do it, your liaison service, so that's fine. Okay, um, so we, just wanted to make sure, June third, we received um, Amy Fleming's resignation, which uh, I, I know she'll be missed, she did a lot, um, she has newborn baby, and she uh, feels like she's got a little more time, obviously, her baby.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we uh, not, except with regret?
With regret and regret.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments? She's had a good job for us, Amy and that.
Yeah, she was good.
Local girl, grew up here and everything, so we'll miss her. Roll call.
Mayor Versini?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
And Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Anything you talked about, the dioxine contamination tonight? One, okay. Uh, okay, I guess uh, I'll make a motion. We open public comment?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Do people want to make public comments? Just need your name, no address anymore.
What's that?
So we just need a name, no address anymore.
Okay, alright, where in Alaska? That's it. Alright, uh, there's a situation that's happening in the town, I don't know if everybody's aware of that, that where the Lowe's is. Uh, there's an individual, and individuals, that have, have, have decided to camp out. There's a model where, I don't think it's a bus stop, I don't think it's a park, and the person is there almost every day. There are people passing by, people my age and little people, on bicycles, and this individual may or may be interacting with them. I don't know how many he is, but I think this, I think we should be looking at what type, where the vagrants type of law, or ordinance that doesn't allow for this. I know there's some towns that over, uh, where the, uh, I guess, Lawa, uh, people there are begging and so forth and so on, and they end up mov- moving those people. That's what's like, it's not appropriate to have it. So I'm just asking the township committee if they can just look into this, because it's been going on for quite some time now. Okay, so today, I think there's more than one. I mean, off the, off the curb, he's got his bike with the, he goes bike with a flag, then we got the baby carriage, and then we got his, his and kid. And they've got a, um, a little, uh, what do you call it, a little?
Camcorder.
Camcorder. So, hey, I, it's, 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 it's wrong, there's, there's something else that's there. So I don't know, he's got a little sign, I don't know if he's begging for what, but I don't think this is part of what we want of a community. That's it.
So, I, I spoke to Lowe's, I, I would have to go back to my emails. I, I spoke to the store manager, I'm gonna say in, probably November, about, about that issue, and I was asking for no loitering signs, which I still haven't heard that, but I do wanna meet with them again to see what they can do. It's Lowe's property. So, he's on, he's, he, he's on.
Saying it's not their property?
No.
But the idea is that when it's on the curb?
Yeah.
The curb is on Lowe's.
Yeah, but right now, he's on Lowe's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I understand.
He has put his bike on.
Yeah, now that's what we were just discussing.
Yeah.
The vagrancy laws have been out for forty years.
Believe me, I.
I thought so. I'm, I'm just thinking maybe.
And loitering, he, he letters.
Put one on the books.
But uh, you wait, without the quote, this, I'm gonna sue, which is not a good word, I guess. But very basically, what you're saying is Lawa tells Black County Police to move them along. Our problem is, we had a couple stores that said that they're not causing a problem for us. If they're on their property, we can't move them.
Yeah.
They, they had more of an issue with the kids, um, during, say, the football season, walking around Lowe's, than they had an issue with that individual. But um, I, I do wanna meet with them, because I, I've had a couple of high school kids now approach me. Who, who's to say they don't put up tents and go all across Lowe's, Fourth of July weekend, and yeah, are they gonna remove them then?
Yeah.
So yeah, no, it's, it's okay, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I'll set up.
Yeah, no, I would love. No, unfortunately, the chief's not here, because I know he's got a much more in-depth answer for you. Um, because he has looked into it, right? It's not known, but, you know, just the short version of it, you know, uh, uh, and Mike has said it many a time, loitering is really not against law. Um, and so long as he's not actively begging, there's not a BOLO that can be done.
Oh, the chief is available, you want?
Oh, is he?
He what?
He is available, he's.
Oh, hey, chief. Um, well, then we should, we should finish open public comment before we get to the.
Yeah, that's all this, I just say, I think, I think, I think we need to look into this.
Yeah, we're looking to it, and then uh, and we, we, and we could direct the chief to have the guys enforce what they can.
Yeah, I think the people at Lowe's, uh, I think there'll be more than, if they just ask.
I mean, I think, that he's, he's taking building materials.
We've had other stores though, similar issues, and they said they're not bothering anybody, we don't care, so.
Yeah.
Not, not camping out, I, I, he doesn't really camp out, he comes.
He just camps it out. I mean, at the one one, they were, the guy was camping.
Oh, I know who you are now. I remember that.
Yeah, you remember that?
Yes.
That was last year.
This guy leaves everybody.
What?
Yeah.
This guy, he has a house, he lives, he has a apartment.
And he has two spaces, he, he hangs at a Hillcrest, uh, mall by the PNC.
Yeah, I haven't seen him in a while.
It thinks it's a shade low pad, and although low pad won't let him put up the hammock.
Yeah, there's no shade there.
Uh, he's sliding right there.
Like, very like, for that, he thought. So I look at it, anyway, thank you.
But thank you. Yeah, but we're, we're a bit, and uh, I know the chief's been looking in.
I can set, we'll set up the meeting as well.
Hi, I'm Kathy. Um, regards to that, okay, I did call, my neighbors have been complaining about it. And I did call the police about it a couple of times, and they didn't, I thought they removed him, cause I, I would check. But I called last week and the dispatcher answered, and he said that, um, I said, whose property is that? They, he said Lowe's. So then I said, okay, so then, um, but he said, we can't remove him unless Lowe's gives us permission. And that he lives in Low Pad, he's not homeless, and then, um, he said, well, is he doing anything? I go, well, I didn't go up to him, I said, he could be mentally ill. I'm not gonna go up to some stranger. I don't know who he is, so then, what happened? I did go to Lowe's yesterday. And I talked to the manager, Olivia, she was gonna talk to the, the head manager, his name was Connor. So she said to call back today, I did call her today, and she said she talked to him, and he said, that's not Lowe's property. So, I'm like,
Yeah, there's.
He said, that it's not Lowe's property, and that they have called the police before to remove him. So somebody needs to do something. It, it upsets me that, you know, I've been here twenty eight years, he shouldn't be hanging out there, okay? He, he lives in Low Pad, he, to our park, go to our park and hang out. But that's, you know, it's, it's the opening entrance to our town. Is that what we want? I don't want it. I've been here twenty eight years, okay? I, I'm proud of this town, and I don't want it to start looking like Ten City. And today, he had a buddy there, hanging out with him on the hammock. Yesterday was a woman, and right before I came here, there was like three people there. So I just hope, I think, Brian, it's a good idea to go over there, but,
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know who owns that property, we're getting chief worries.
I, you know what, I, I'll set up something tomorrow, because like I said, I, I'll be on record, I, I'm not happy with it as well.
Okay, good.
But yeah, I think I'm probably.
A lot of the neighbors aren't happy.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I don't wanna speak, but not, not on that topic.
You can speak on any topic you want.
Uh, my name is Scott Dernan, uh, or Mark Burges, you probably need my address, it's twenty two Greenwood Street.
Yeah, very familiar with it.
I didn't realize that's who you were.
No, I didn't either.
The sewer contractor is bringing a sewer line up the road, gonna go right in front of my house, then across the street. I'm looking to run a line parallel, uh, their line, and then tie into that manhole. What I'm, what I'm looking from you is guidance, capacity, and approval.
Okay.
I read a lot of you learned about this.
Okay, uh, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Your matter is going to be addressed in executive session later, and I can fill you in on a couple of things that have happened since we talked. Uh, we had a meeting of the sewer subcommittee here in town, which consists of an attorney, another engineer, myself, and Mr. Bean and Mr. Baylor. That led to me scheduling a meeting with the Ingrammets fellows, which both went very well, knowing what you're looking to achieve. So, um, I need to advise the entire committee of, what has transpired and what the options are to provide sewer service to you. Okay, that hasn't been done yet, other than via email, so, um, but that's going to happen in later on. So, so you, there's been progress, you definitely have not been forgotten about, and we're working on it, and we think there's a light at the end of the tunnel here.
And we're working on it and we think there's a light at the end of the tunnel here. It's better than what you have. Laid out that that I see.
Alright, I'm just uh, I've been wanting to fall through the cracks, I know I'm running out of time, so thank you for your time.
No, sorry.
Okay, anyone else? I'll make a motion, we close public comment?
Second.
All favor? Mister Dernan, uh, yeah, we're well aware of it. Getting back to what I said earlier, we can't run sewer lines either. It's like an act of God in this thing to do anything, but. I I don't know what to tell you, other than I think we're gonna be able to work it out. I hope we work it. To me, this should have been a. Half hour process. It takes so much sense to do what you're requesting, but. You know, it's not just us, it's a county road, it's uh, it's it, you gotta get different permits, it's just crazy, but. I feel your pain.
Wanted to to go through the proper channel, I was told, you know, just slam it in and, you know, don't worry about it.
You know what, I almost said that earlier. Earlier, earlier when I was going on my little rampage, I almost said, I said, I'm almost to the point, I feel like just putting stuff in and beg for forgiveness later. It makes you get to that point, like you're trying to do things the right way, what you think should be something easy, and you say, oh, that's a two-year process. Uh, it's just bizarre, so.
Yeah, so my purpose here today is just to make sure everybody's aware.
Mike's been working on it, there's been a lot of emails in the last couple of days.
When I heard your name too, I'm like, oh, okay, there you go. I think if I, I think I recommended that you come tonight.
And you know, the chief wants to address the public comments made about the guide. So chief, you still there?
Thank you.
I am. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so. The first uh question that was asked about the. Uh, individual on Greenwood Street there by Mister Blaska, uh, the signs that. To my knowledge, any signage that he's had or posted up has not been anything of a soliciting nature, which. Is the only thing that uh. You know, that we could actually go after, and even that, when it's on Lowe's property, we can't do anything about it unless. Lowe's calls as, uh, I don't believe, uh, I don't know if it was the mayor or if it was uh Committeeman Bean that had mentioned. So, uh, his signs usually are something like, God bless America or something, uh, to that nature, patriotic. Um, so. If he did have a sign that was soliciting. Uh, and it was on the property, just like I said, we we can't do anything, it's it's a First Amendment thing. Um, and unless Lowe's calls us. Uh, second, his. Uh, the comment that he was not on Lowe's property. Uh, I didn't get the uh lady's uh name that mentioned that Lowe said that. He wasn't on their property. To my knowledge, anytime that I've seen him out there, he's been on Lowe's property. And again. I believe the mayor and Committeeman Bean confirmed that uh it is Lowe's property. So. Uh, perhaps his, uh, if he has his bike out on the curb, that's a different issue that uh we can address. But um, him being with his hammock out on their properties is their property, uh, is is not an issue that we can en- enforce unless they call. Uh, and. I don't recall Lowe's ever calling us. Well, actually, I know they've never called us about him on their property. And quite frankly, I don't remember them ever calling about a solicitor on their property in my. Uh, career here in Greenwood, so, um, they are one of the businesses that, you know, don't really mind. The uh, the people on their property, if they're soliciting or not. So any calls that we get usually are from customers and whatnot. And uh, if there's anything else that I didn't address, please let me know.
Okay, so if I can repeat, so what you're saying is that if Lowe's calls. Now, we always say that, oh yeah, we're calling, you know, that's. Every call them, yeah, yeah, sure, yeah. But if they call and say we'd like to have them removed, you can go and remove them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, fine, so.
Okay.
So Brian, you're gonna make it an, is it their property?
So.
They're saying they they don't.
You know, the problem is, Lowe's the thing, you're talking to the manager.
We'll probably eventually get like the regional managers.
Grab to talk to somebody.
Yeah, but this has been discussed, I I mean, I brought it up multiple times.
Interesting question, Wade. Are you on the spot?
Yeah.
Could there potentially be zoning issues with that?
Yeah, definitely.
Cause it's a, it's a business, but it doesn't say you're allowed to allow people to camp on your property.
Yeah, during business hours, um, it's a little bit more difficult, difficult, but overnight issues, I mean, you've got to look at their.
I never see him coming.
He's moved their building materials out.
Yeah. I've never talked to him here, I used to talk to him when he was in Felsberg a lot and uh. You know, and a lot of people like, like he gets food all day.
All the time.
He gets. Such a guy, you're all about Wawa too. He used to buy him food all day long too. And that guy ironically, he was going out from Wawa. I don't know, I don't think he was homeless either. He's he's home there all the time, he uses a fire cloth and stuff all day long. And one night I meet at the Warren side, he comes and sits at a table and orders a full.
Wow.
So.
Could you prove that?
So, anyway, but we're looking for it.
Yeah, I'll let you know. Yeah, I'll I'll try to set something up tomorrow.
Okay, uh. I'll make a motion, we close public comment, we never did that.
We actually.
Oh, we did that, okay, I didn't remember. Okay, um. I guess I'm looking for a motion, go to the executive session, discuss personnel contract and attorney client. A second, all favor?
Aye.
I don't know how long we're gonna be. Hopefully not too long. No lawyer is gonna really be talking too long, but uh, sometimes the engineer could be quite.
Well, if you if you were able to.
Okay, I make a motion, we go back in public?
Second.
All favor?
I um.
Hold on.
I gotta, yeah, uh, township committee met an executive session where it discussed privileged matters involving. Uh, personnel contracts and attorney-client privilege minutes from the executive session will be released at such time as the. Committee deems no public harm will come from it. Um, did you want to say something or do you want me to make the motion?
Oh, you can make the motion, yeah.
Or not the motion, but it's gonna be a resolution, there's now gonna be a resolution uh for a uh, to make an offer of employment. To. Uh, what's her name?
Uh, Patricia Huxton.
There's a Huxton for finance office assistant.
I'd make, I'd like to make that motion.
A second, any questions, comments, questions, roll call.
Mayor Versini?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else we want to go talk about?
Yeah, well, yeah, there's a couple of things that we want, I that we're in our package too.
Okay.
One of which is the letter that Mike crafted to send to Warren Materials.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Yeah, I mean, this is fine, we should be meeting with them and I I I would have liked it to have said to bring along your test results. You know, your equality, you know, but I guess we can, when we meet with them, we can have that conversation.
You and I with them?
Uh, that's whoever, I'm I'm good with that.
Okay, so we, I guess Mike will make that appointment? Cause he's gonna be there, so you still Mike Labor or do we all need him?
Um, I don't know that we're gonna need him for that. I think we can, we just.
You gonna reach out to him then? See if we make an appointment or you want Lisa?
I can forward the email, they did get back to Mike.
Okay, okay, so forward that up.
Yeah, they're willing to meet you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and I don't think we need to do anything with this about this gentleman who's hoping to be a secondary option. With the cannabis. I saw Amy said they're not quite ready, but what I am, I am gonna come up here too is. Let's talk about Drake's joint.
We pull your chunk to that. You brought up, I was gonna bring up about Amy Overman you're talking about.
Yes.
I want to draft a response to her. I'm starting to feel like they're treating us like they did the residents. I get back here three weeks.
Yeah.
I need another three weeks. I need another three weeks. That line is only like a mile long, I mean.
Right.
How many, how much engineering time does it take to figure out answers to that? So. I I think she's very cooperative, she's very good, but. I'm starting to feel about them like with Comcast, like they just keep kicking it down the road, three more weeks, three more.
So can we send her a plain little, okay, we understand that, but you know what?
Yeah, because I I've told the citizens twice now, because I think they call, they call. Like if I say they're gonna put contact. Then it's three weeks, what you find out. And now I feel funny telling them it's another three weeks, cause I feel like they're hanging up the phone saying.
I've had the opportunity to tell lots of people, they told me that they were gonna do twenty million dollars worth of infrastructure. And they've got a a special group working on their power problem.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul, what's, I I don't know, I get put off again, you know what I'm saying? So that's kind of where it is, so. But you know, just a little letter or something that says, you know, Amy, you know.
The next thing you're gonna tell, I think silence is golden, but go ahead.
What, no, I don't want to talk about the the letter at all. I think what I'm looking for. Is we need to recover the costs because he's so sidestepped the system. You know, I mean, for. Like to put his time, the attorney and all that kind of stuff, you have to put an escrow in to get something through the land use board. And he's chose to buck the system all the way, but there are costs associated with everything he's done. I don't know what Mike's bill is or is in, or if we've even been built for it yet, but Attorney Labor, he's got time in here.
Uh, we did a review.
You did a review, right. So I think that there should be, just like if we send somebody out to mow somebody's grass. We should be able to put a lien on that property for at least the expenditures that we've already done. I I don't care about anything else, I just think we should be able to recover our tax dollar.
I I think, well, I don't want to talk about it, especially. I don't know if he technically owns the property or.
No, he technically owns the property.
I didn't think they ever did the transfer.
No, no, he technically does the same thing down here like when when it was crawdaddies.
Okay.
You know. He wasn't paying for it, but he technically owned it. There was a transfer of whatever there. So, a- and even if that's the case, then Santini's, you know, we'll discuss that when the time comes. But I I right now, I feel that we should be able to put a tax lien on the property. Wade, does that sound like something we can do?
This is for the cost, just attorney fees.
Attorney fees and engineering fees, because he's sidestepped the land use board process.
I can.
Fill you in?
Yeah, I I'm I'm not super familiar with that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is he the, is he going bye-bye or no?
Not not officially, no.
He can't go bye-bye quick enough.
No, but. Did you read this?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Are we ready for a motion to adjourn? Anybody else? Paul, you done?
Yep.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
I'll say.
All favor?
Aye.
Nays, any nays?
I know.
Everyone stay longer?
No.
Is that recording on?